Okay, good evening. I'd like to welcome you to this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, August 23rd, 2021. Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey? Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the July 12th, 2021 meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll move to approve the minutes from the July 12th, 2021 meeting.
Second.
Moved by Jay, seconded by James. Any corrections?
Yes, Alan.
Grace?
Yeah, small one, under others present. Oh, no, under that. So B, approval of the minutes, just a small change, voice vote to a hyphen instead of a equal sign.
Any other corrections? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? I don't believe there are any. Next up are presentations and public input. The first presentation will be the Library Annual Report, and we have Director of the Urbana Free Library, Celeste Scho. Welcome. Could we make sure the presentation is on the screens for the audience? Oh, there we go. Not yet. For the audience to see. Thank you.
Much better, I hope?
Much better.
Great, thank you so much, James. So thank you for your time tonight. As you know, we are in the middle of a pandemic. Nonetheless, the Urbana Free Library staff provided excellent service to our community throughout the year, and I'm really proud to share with you some of those highlights. You received a 22-page document highlighting the requirements that the state has for the library to represent to you, the city council, how we have used the public's funds. So there's a lot of very specific information in there. I thought I'd take a look at some of the higher-level things, show you in pictures instead of just the words of how the library's work impacted our community, and then see if you have any questions. So we focus on the strategic plan. We have four pillars: embrace, enrich, empower, and enhance. Our vision is to nurture growth by sparking curiosity and fostering a sense of belonging. And our mission statement is to encourage learning and enrich lives by providing access to diverse resources and programs. And you're going to see a lot about programs here because, again, even though it was a pandemic, and even though we did a lot via Zoom, there was a lot that we could do to bring our community together in different ways. So one thing that we did is work with the county and had a ballot box installed so that people could vote in new ways, so that people could participate in the democratic process. And I think the city, because if you were to look at a map of the parking lot at the Urbana Free Library, some of it's owned by the city and some of it's owned by the library. And this particular piece of land is owned by the city. So thank you for your partnership in working with the county and being able to provide our residents one more way to vote in the elections this year. We partnered with the public schools to provide a giant book that was created by kids and what it was like to be in kindergarten during a pandemic. And this was a book written by them in Spanish and in English, and it was on display. It was a big fold-up book, and it was put on the top of some tables in the children's department so that people could come in and see the creative work that was done and learn about the experiences of our children, our community. We're partnering with the Cranor Art Museum and Design Museum in participating in the crochet coral reef project. We've had different people come out and teach community members outside how to crochet so that they can participate in this. It's an international phenomenon of creating these coral reefs based on science and math patterns. And we have a display right now in the library displays case. You might have seen some of the displays outside the art coop, and there's going to be a huge display at the art museum, and we're super excited to participate. The Friends of the Urbana Free Library could not hold their three normal book sales this year, but they started having pop-up book sales. We have all these donations coming in from our generous community members, and we were able to have pop-up book sales in a limited way and have sales of books on our book carts. And we have an Etsy store, and they have an Amazon store. So they actually sold $19,000 worth of books and videos and CDs over the past year, which is actually quite a good year for them. We had one book that sold for $300. So being able to tap into this national audience has created an opportunity for us to make even more money than we would have in the past in some ways. And so the Friends turned around and then bought a new collection of books for us. I love the little spider book in the center. These are called VOX books, V-O-X. They're a big-picture book, and they have an audio player built into the actual book. So it's not the old-school book on CD which people love. The book and the audio is built in together, and we got that for our community through the generosity of our Friends. We have the seed lending library, which got off to a really great start with community members donating and then someone donating 8,000 packets of seeds to Solagrotcha, who them donated to us. And we're working with other community partners to distribute these. So we have an old-school card catalog, actually six old-school card catalogs on the second floor, so you can walk upstairs and take the seeds that you want. And later we'll be giving directions out there so how people can bring back seeds and we can keep this thing going. It's like Give a Book, Take a Book, but with seeds, and it's benefiting our community. We're partnering with Cunningham Township. We're partnering with Solagrotcha and other places, Red Herring, in order to talk about how to grow food and then how to cook food and how to use food and interact with food. We're super excited. We had these online programs I mentioned, so it's How to Make a Sock Puppet, and then people shared their sock puppets on the screen. It was very engaging. And then we had these corner bookmark take-home kits. So twice a month for a period of months, a staff member designed bookmarks, and we would make the kits available, and people could take them home and then be creative together. And at the end of the bookmark season, the librarian said, okay, who's missing ones? We have 18 different bookmarks. Who's missing one? And we had over 200 people say they needed more bookmarks to create these for the collection. So people were super engaged. We partner with the Urbana Business Association to have outdoor Halloween trick-or-treating to keep people moving and engaged in our community together. And we had over 200 families come and show off their costumes and engage with the library and in downtown Urbana and what's happening downtown. We have electronic cards for people who prefer to stay away from other people, so you can use this. You can even apply online and not even come in. You can use this for all our different databases. We still continue to offer curbside pickup because, again, we know some people don't want to come in the building for whatever number of reasons. The teen open lab, which is super popular with the kids after school, went online. They did a book club once a month, and we're doing other crafts the other three weeks. That's been popular with the kids, and they come back in person next week after the book sale. We're super excited to see how that's going to go. We partner with community experts like Karen Sims to meet other needs in addition to being creative, talking about how do you find strength in difficult times like the ones we're facing together. And then our home delivery service is still very popular, and we're glad to be able to offer that. It's a lifeline for some people. Last year, we talked about the library inheriting and receiving the News Gazette's archives. So I wanted to give you a quick update. It's located in the Lincoln Square Mall in the basement, but now it's available online. So I'll send you some direct links later, but we have a digital platform called Omeka, and you can search and find the collections that we have there. Some people have asked reference questions. We found the articles. We've scanned the articles, their full text online. They were oriented towards the university, but as people request items from this collection, it's our intention to scan them and then make them available for everyone in the community. If I go back up, I missed mentioning, there's different kinds of items in the collection, so photos, microfilm, as well as little envelopes with articles on topics cut up together, cut up and stuffed in the envelopes together. And we've got a subject index started of the names on the envelopes. So far, we're on page 140 of names of the envelopes, and we're not done yet. So we're trying to, step by step, put information out there so our community knows what's available so that we can share it with you, because it's your collection. I like to have a slide like this every year. How many items are checked out at the library? And today, 25,700 items are checked out, which has got a value of $524,741. This doesn't include the almost 2,000 eBooks that are checked out at the moment and the streaming things that we offer that we pay per item. It's a different price point. So at the moment, over $500,000 worth of items is checked out. So we feel, for a number of reasons, that it's been a strong year for us and our community, and we look forward to more of the same and more, more, this year. Staff are great. They've just done such a fabulous job in showing their creativity and responsiveness to what our community has asked for. So thank you for your support, and thank you for your time.
Any questions for Celeste? Thank you very much, Celeste. Chris?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. And, you know, thank you to the library. It's kind of like my favorite thing about Urbana. I did have a question, though. What's going to happen to the coffee shop and that front lounge area seems to be storing furniture now? And like, what's going on with that?
We've closed the café temporarily until we feel it's prudent to open it back up with having eating in the library. Right now, we're requiring that everyone wear a mask. We will open the café if we can feel confident that it will break even, which it has not done for a number of years. It's been close, but it's not broken even, so that's on pause. And we've spaced tables out throughout the building so that there can be some social distancing still, and that's why that one room is still a storage room for furniture. But we've just emptied out the Glaston Room, the McFarland Hood Reading Room, and we expect to open that up soon, within the next week or so. It will not look like that forever.
Any other questions? Grace?
Thank you. I just want to say thanks for the great work you guys are doing, too. I had lots of smiley faces through this. Love the, like, the new art hangings and cards for Urbana students, people working with the township, the hold shelf, and the automatic renewal, I thought was a very great and generous thing. Just wanted to mention a few of the really great things that I loved that you may not have mentioned. And then I have a question, too. But yeah, I love the programming, your work on racial education, activism, and discussion, and also helping people looking for employment and getting all the extra grants. Looks like you guys have been very busy, so I just want to say I appreciate those great programs. My question was about the News Gazette Archive Collection, and I was just wondering why the News Gazette and if there were any other media outlets that could be included, just because they do kind of seem to have a unique take, in my opinion. You know, like, why is the News Gazette's version of it the one going down in the historical archives and not others?
So that's a great question. I'm really glad that you asked that. When the News Gazette was going to be selling their building, they were selling off all their assets. And one asset they had was this collection of items over the years of how they documented their work. And it was either that the library or a library like us take it and then make it available to our community so that we can study. What were the articles that were written? How has that changed over the years? We see this as a treasure trove, to be able to trace the coverage of news, what is and what isn't covered over the years. So if other libraries, sorry, if other news agencies in the area close, as they have, and have an archive, we would certainly talk with them about incorporating that into the Champaign County Historical Archives.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mary Alice?
Well, thank you. I always enjoy hearing all the new programs that you guys have, and kudos to the staff for making it through and being creative this year. One thing that caught my eye was Peterson's Test and Career Prep, and that was something I wasn't familiar with, so I have two questions there. The first one's easy. How is this being advertised to high school students and people at Parkland? And the second one, if you could just give, kind of, for people who are watching, what it can be used for?
I'm not going to know all the parts of what it can be used for. I have librarians that select databases based on the needs of our community, and so this one helps people prepare for tests, generally speaking. It covers a wide variety of tests, and I know that it's been popular with the high school students. We have a newsletter that goes out monthly through the Urbana School District that goes to teachers and parents, if there's an email address on file, so it goes out that way. We also post to social media, Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram to help promote our different databases. And then throughout our webpage, we'll have little, I don't want to say pop-ups, but little blurbs on our front page that will highlight different databases. So those are some of the different ways. I'm not sure how we've reached out to Parkland, though, so I'm going to make a note that we should do that because those students would benefit as well.
So, I mean, when I think of test preparation, I think of Kaplan, I think of, you know, all those others. Do you know how this is in comparison to those other resources that people pay for? If not, it's okay.
It is, I would be more comfortable if I could send you an email later-
Yep, that would be totally fine.
... and list the different things that it does so I can be more specific.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chris, did you have questions?
Just to piggyback Councilman Wilkin's concern, you do have on microfilm the Courier, correct? And you've got the entire Octopus collection, I believe?
I believe you're correct.
Yeah, and so there are other media collections.
We also do have access to databases, sorry, one of our databases has access to different newspapers. So we've got things from the New York Times to others as well, but this physical collection came our way because they were closing.
Any other questions for Celeste? Thank you, and thank you once again on behalf of the entire community for all that you do.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next presentation is from the Urbana Police Department, and it's on the revised use of force policy. And presenting will be Chief Bryant Seraphin and Deputy Chief Rich Surles. As a way of introduction, I just want to thank the police department, many members of the community who participated over the last 10 months or so in the revision of our use of force policy. I especially want to acknowledge the leadership from the ACLU Chapter of Champaign County and the NAACP Champaign County Branch for their leadership here and working with community members. It was, I am as proud of the process as I am of the product, so we look forward to your presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens. Can everybody hear me okay? This is my maiden voyage with the mask-
Just be sure to speak into the mic as much as you can.
My maiden voyage with the microphone here with the mask on. So thank you for the opportunity tonight, and we will go through the use of force policy as it's been revised. As the mayor said, this has been a journey over several months, and what we have tonight is a document that is on point with trying to deliver guidelines to police officers so that our use of force is objectively reasonable, necessary, and proportional. You will see that. I hope everyone's had a chance to read the document. You should see that verbiage throughout. And my hope tonight is that I'll have some comments for you, point out some highlights, and then Deputy Chief Surles and I will do our best to answer any questions that you might have. The memo that accompanied your packet did highlight the process that we've gone through over the several, over the months, starting back in last November. And there were lots and lots of interesting bits of feedback and lots of communications and conversations that were had. Again, I want to echo the mayor's thanks to Minnie Pearson of the Champaign County Branch of the NAACP, as well as Carol Spindell of the local ACLU. And they were instrumental in us working through this, especially this winter and spring as we discussed different issues and had lots of, I guess, meaningful conversation. At first glance, you'll notice the policy is about double in length. So the original one that we had was seven pages. This one is the neighborhood of 14. I think you'll see there's a lot more explanation throughout the policy in different areas. You'll see some similar, some same verbiage, stuff that was carried over, but you'll also see lots of new material. This policy, probably more so than any other that we have, is as much for the citizens and the community as it is for the officers who it guides. And I think that's an important point to note. And so as you look in and read through these pages, you'll see some of that information, and it should hopefully come through that, again, it's a tool that we can use so that our community knows what our values are and what our expectations are. One of the things you will not see a lot of in here is a bunch of discussion about discipline. Now, the city adheres to the tenants for its employees of progressive discipline. We have a specific policy on discipline, and one of the things we didn't want to do is try to get into some sort of if this, then this, if this, then that, that type of discussion. So the use of force is complex. Its analysis is correspondingly complex. So there's some discussion about discipline, but it's not necessarily a menu, if you will, for lots of specifics. Finally, before I give a few overviews, I wanted to make one other contextual comment to set this discussion. Many of you have heard before that the Urbana Police Department responds somewhere in the neighborhood of 25,000 to 30,000 calls for service every year. Of those calls for service, uses of force, approximately 100 to 150 times officers use force. And probably just over a third of those are displays. So if a officer were to display a taser or display a gun that said, we would count that, even though no application of any mechanical force was made. So I just want to say that upfront here so that we can at least understand what we're talking about, and I do think that the officers here do a lot of de-escalating. And you'll see that, and hopefully you've seen that throughout the policy. With regards to the body of the policy itself, there are some, there is a new section at the beginning noted as Principles and Values. And within there are five different subsections, and those set a baseline, again, of tenants that guide our work in this particular area. This is exactly the part, one of the parts I was talking about with regards to this policy is for the citizens as much as the officers. And you will see in there different parts of our value set in that section. In addition, there's the definitional section. If you saw the old policy, it was the existing policy. There were two whole terms that were defined. This time, I think there's 11 actual terms that we've defined, including definitions that we felt were important, that came from the statute, looking for consistency between our policy and the statute. We do not, we do not want confusion in this particular area. You'll also notice the section Duty to Intervene and Report has been expanded upon. There's been more specificity included in that section. The Safety Act that was passed in January and then the subsequent trailer bill in June provided some guidance. And those were, and those efforts were made as we were working on this, which did sort of elongate some of our, some of our process. You'll even see in just some of the specifics in this new policy talk about things like, not only do you have this duty to intervene and report, but who do you, to whom do you report and in what timeframe? And some of those specifics are in this particular policy. One of the biggest things, the biggest changes, I believe, between the old policy and this new one is the emphasis and the detail listed with regards to de-escalation. As a matter of fact, one of the sections was called, in the old one, it was actually entitled Use of Force 300 Point Something or Other, and now it's entitled De-escalation and Use of Force, with the idea being that is our first effort whenever possible. In the section about de-escalation that we added to that Use of Force section, you'll see some general comments at the beginning, and then there are approximately two pages of material on de-escalation, trying to explain it, trying to make sure that it's clear. What do we mean when we say that? And you'll see that for a couple of pages in there. Another section that I think is obviously very important here because we, as I said, one of the, what we're looking for is this objectively reasonable, necessary, and proportional. And how do we decide what's reasonable? How do we decide those particular factors? And there's a series of factors that are listed in there. Some were modified, we, some were added, and I believe that also is an area that does help guide the officers specifically as to their actions. Some things remain the same. Chokeholds were not allowed in the old policy, and they're not allowed in the new policy. There's a section with regards to deadly force. In there, there's some similarities to the old, but one of the things you'll notice that we did in this one, there's some, at the beginning of the section, there's some repeated language that you see in other places, but we felt it was important to add that again there so that, to some extent, this particular subsection can stand on its own. But you will also see that the policy there is aligned with the language, again, of the new statute that was passed in the Safety Act. And I think that is a good thing, as well as we took into account the trailer bill language. So what you see there, we believe, is consistent with the state law. In the old policy, the concept of termination of use of force was sort of sprinkled throughout, baked into the cake. But one of the things we've done with this one is we've set up its own entire section on termination of use of force. This new section, this completely new section, specifically discusses the constant evaluation of an incident and those officers adjusting their response to the situation that presents itself, so that these sorts of encounters are never static, and they're dynamic, and we, as your police department, need to be able to adjust and modify our response to the resistance. As I was preparing and going through some of the final documents, even after we had sent them out, of course, it wouldn't be complete without a typographical error, again, as I noticed, and I'm sure you might have others, so we actually had a citation I needed to correct. So despite all of our work, there was a reference in 300.8 that needs to be changed to 300.3.1, but those are the kinds of things that do happen. So I understand that, and we've gone and tried to make those changes. I will kind of finish up my comments, at least to here as far as the overview, with the rollout plan. So one of the things, as I talked about with this typo even, we have, my admin assistant is taking these, all of this, and then wedging it into our document policy software platform, Lexible is the name. And so we know that came up as we had our discussions back in the winter. And so we're trying to make sure that we can get these sections all fit into there, and that is being worked on. The other thing that we'll do with this policy now is we'll go to all of our briefings. We'll go to all the roll calls and be face-to-face with every officer, and they, too, will get these 14 pages, and we'll go through all of this, the material, pointing out the new, as well as some of the concepts that were the same, as just so that, as a point of reference right now, when we go to roll call, anytime we want to push something out, that usually consists of six briefing trainings. Some of you might know this, I think, from our tours that we did earlier in the year, but again, the police department here works 12-hour shifts. So while half are working, the other half are off, and every couple of days, they switch. And there's a day shift, and an afternoon shift, and the night shift. So we want to hit all of those, so that's three times two, so there's your six, plus then the detectives need, that section needs to be, we'll touch base with those folks as well and train them. I had a couple of notes, but at this point, I'm going to stop and see if, I'm sure there's some questions, and we will do our best to go ahead and answer those here as we move forward in this process.
Any questions for Chief Surles or Deputy Chief, I'm sorry, Chief Seraphin?
Any questions for Chief Searls or Deputy Chief, I'm sorry, Chief Seraphin or Deputy Chief Searls? It's been a long day. Grace.
Thank you. I have a lot. I'll try and prioritize, think about where to start. So I appreciate that we've made some changes to this with some more input, some limited community input. And I'm wondering here, I feel like force is a really broad term, and there's a huge spectrum between, you know, gaining compliance with minimal force versus excessive force and abuse. And I noticed here that excessive force is not even defined in here. Like you have definitions for force and what is reasonable force, but there's nothing for what excessive force actually is, even though it's mentioned in here only a few times in the document. But I think that if you're looking for any more ideas, although it seems like you're not, I would recommend better defining and differentiating types of force, what is excessive force, because that seems to be a really big lacking piece there, in my opinion. I was also wondering, my question here is, what force would not be justified? Because it seems like almost anything is justifiable. And particularly, I'm concerned with the reasonableness of force having to do with level of exhaustion of the officer, number of officers present, suspected drug or alcohol use, mental state or capability. I still don't know why someone's mental capability would justify force particularly just because of that. Also, the training and experience of the officer seems like an adequate reason to use force. If they don't have experience or training, that just seems strange to me. And even the officer created jeopardy, that just seems really strange, that you say you're going to emphasize de-escalation, but say if an officer escalates a situation, they have the right to justifiably use whatever force they feel necessary. So also, one more line in here, as you said, I know that, you know, situations change, and they'll have to adapt, but I feel like it's, it's pretty lenient, saying under circumstances where they need to improvise, the use of any improvised device or method must be utilized only to the degree that it appears objectively reasonable and necessary to accomplish the legitimate law enforcement purpose. So I feel like we're laying out this stuff and then saying, accept pretty much anything. So I guess my question here is, what would, like, could you give me an example of what would be a use of force that would be considered not acceptable under this policy?
Sure. Let me back up just a second. You, you had a lot of information there. I do, I, I wanted to comment briefly on what you started with. I believe you said limited community input. And I, and I know that in November, we held three listening sessions, and we did it via Zoom, and then we had an open email address dedicated to this particular topic, which led to a, a January council-level discussion. So we did have, anybody that had a thought, we were able to listen. I will also say that at the, once we had gotten through that particular process, we did bring the ACLU and the NAACP, they had specific concerns, and so we worked with them to develop a policy that they were, that they were satisfied with. With regards to the, I, I want to make sure that this is, this is clear under 300.4.3. And you're, that's, I think, the, it's titled Factors Used to Determine the Reasonableness of Force. That doesn't mean that these are when you can necessarily use force, but those are all sort of factors that are considered to determine if something is reasonable. So for instance, if we have a smaller framed officer who's five feet tall and 100 pounds, that's how we wouldn't perhaps analyze, maybe their force decision would be different than if someone was six foot two and 275 pounds. Some of how we deal with force analysis does reflect on, on those, some of those factors. There's a couple other ones, the, the person's mental state or capacity. It doesn't mean if somebody's, that we could, if, if someone is perhaps challenged in some way, that we would be able to use more force. That gets, that speaks a little bit to the understanding of situations and, and how, how we would interact. So if someone was indeed, that's one of the reasons why we even with language barriers and whatnot, and we teach a survival Spanish to the officers so that we can try to avoid any horrific kind of event. The officer-created jeopardy is a, is an, is a concept that if someone were to say, as an example, this, I think, is what you asked for, someone were to draw a, a knife, and I am within arm's reach, a case could be made that deadly force could be, could be used. If someone were to draw a knife, and I'm 100 yards away at the other end of a football field, deadly force would not be authorized. If the officer then were to close the distance and get within two feet, and it's, well, I had to use deadly force, chief. No, that was officer-created, that was officer-induced. You changed the dynamics, and that's a factor that we need to consider. Sometimes these factors would weigh in favor of the officer's behavior, and sometimes they would not. So these are simply factors, they aren't necessarily blanket permissions to use force. So I hope that helps a, a little bit.
Yes, thank you. And I had follow-up questions on that same line. May I continue?
Let's go on to some other council members, and we'll come back. Chris.
Chief, again, thanks for the work on this and everything. You once said, I, I heard you say, de-escalation is a two-way street. Could you maybe explain that?
Sure. There are certain scenarios. Let me back up a second. Sometimes people think that de-escalation is some sort of magic wand that all the police have, and I will de-escalate you, and I'm going to de-escalate you. And I'm not an instructor in de-escalation, but I've been to enough classes that there are certain things, there are certain concepts that we can use, like time, cover, and distance, and other things, I think, is, that are listed in here. Those are the, the big three that come to mind to me. But there has to be some level of engagement for us to be successful in de-escalating. So in an extreme situation such as a, a school shooting, there might not be time to do, to work through a full de-escalation, a sort of process. So I, I think what we look for is, in the, in some of these scenarios, is that at least, is there some, is there give and take? And that's why I think it's so important that we have so many situations where we do not use force. And so I do think that, again, the, there, there has to be some level, some willingness to participate in some, at least, conversation to begin that de-escalation process.
Okay. But I guess what I, I'm, I think you, you are expecting citizens to do some form of de-escalation so the officer can de-escalate. In other words, we don't attack the officer, we don't physically resist, we don't engage, you know, in physical behavior that puts the officer at risk, right? I mean, that, that would be our part, our citizens' part of de-escalation, right?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, okay. But if I verbally tell you, I do not consent to be searched, I'm not escalating, right? I mean, I'm enforcing my constitutional rights, right?
Well, I, I, I suppose it would depend upon the, upon the scenario.
Circumstances, yeah, yeah.
So, yes, correct. So there might be certain scenarios, someone is called in, is robbing the liquor store, and he's wearing a, a, a blue blazer, and we see him two blocks away, and he's armed with a gun, we would be able to frisk him, whether he wanted to or not.
No, I, I understand that. But I'm, I'm thinking of empty-handed, you know, a normal, like, you approach me all of a sudden, and I say I don't consent to be searched. I can, I can at least invoke that verbally, correct?
Correct, yes, yes.
Okay. And if I verbally tell you, I do not wish to speak to you, I can invoke that too, right? I'm not, I'm not escalating, I'm just inserting my constitutional rights. Okay. Another quick question. In the preparation of a use-of-force report, I, I understand that mo, all use-of-force will be documented through an investigation and a report is compiled, correct?
Depends on the level of force.
A level, right, yeah, that's true, that's true. But will those be subject to FOIA by the public and the media?
Yes.
Okay, those will. Okay, great. Anybody else?
Mary Alice.
So, thank you. I know that this has been a long process, and I know that we've received a lot of input from a variety of different avenues, including just coming to city council and having people give input. My question is on training for de-escalation. It's something that I see is not just a one-stop. You can go to a two-hour Zoom call and, and get trained, and all of a sudden, you're now able to de-escalate situations. So my question to you is, what is the ongoing process to ensure that our police force are adequately trained, or appropriately trained, perhaps is a better word, to be able to do de-escalation?
So I'll start with sort of the, the basic training, if you will. And this had come up a couple of different times, and I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact numbers in, in front of me. A certain block of instruction early at the Police Training Institute is dedicated for the classroom portion of verbal persuasion and influence, I think is the, is the exact title of the block. And it's either maybe a four or an eight-hour block, or, and I don't recall exactly. They do that early while recruits are at the academy, and they do that so that throughout the course of other training, it can be woven into various scenarios, and whether that might be building search scenarios, or they, they do mock domestic violence scenarios, or even, even more technical aspects, whether it's on the range or on the, on the, on the mats for defensive tactics. So they get, try to, so they want to weave it throughout the, the training process. We give, then, each year, there's some level of refresher with, that we do in-house, what we call during in-service training. So we will, we'll do a block, and it might be an hour or two, depending on the time and other training needs. And then we would like to make sure that we have that, then, as one of the things that we're, that we're doing, that we have tried to do better at, which is now, now weave that into this time we're going to spend on the mats with regards to some of the defensive tactics and some of those kinds of things. And so that's, those, those are the two main components. Sometimes we do have, if we feel that through some reviews and some other performance standards, we see that someone might be struggling, we will also then have other classes that they can do, there are other communication classes. Matter of fact, I, I, I attended one last October as well, to see what was some of the information that was being trained on. So we can also then supplement our in-service, which was added to the basic training.
So I, there are, there are different levels of de-escalation, and I'm sure that there's different levels of people being successful and not successful. Have you, or do you have any plans to take successful de-escalation incidents, which are body camera video, and share those with the staff so that they can see a good use of how de-escalation could be utilized?
So, as a matter of fact, we, we, there's a couple of police training-type scenarios, and granted, they are police-focused training things, but they will actually show and do different things with regards to, or show different, to, show different principles of things that went well, and then correspond with things that didn't go well. So we will use those particular things. I don't know that we've done a lot of our own in-house sort of training based on, unless you can correct me, Rich, we've done some of our own in-house training with regards to some of our own exact materials. But I know that there's a plethora of, of videos and other things that we have used, they'll do them at roll call training, Caliber Press, and there's other ones that are out there that will shoot some scenarios out, and take 12 minutes at briefing, watch this, let's talk about how we can do it better. How did that officer do it right, or maybe didn't do it right?
So I, I, if I remember correctly, the, I don't know if it's the lieutenants or the sergeants, review body camera video periodically. I don't know how many they do per month, but I think, I think it would be good, I mean, one of the struggles with writing these types of policies is there are so many different kinds of scenarios, right? I mean, there's just lots of possibilities. And so putting it down and writing in terms of what you can and cannot do, you can't just say, okay, in this scenario, you do this, in this scenario, you do this. So I do think that it would be helpful to be able to see in the actual calls that we receive, and the actual situations that we have, it could be beneficial, just something to think about in terms of showing those. And since we already review those periodically, hopefully it wouldn't be too much more time.
And then Chandra.
Yeah, thank, thank you for the work, and thank you for the presentation. I am, I'd like to hear what your opinion is on how no chase policies might fit into a de-escalation model as opposed to an escalation model?
With regards, no chase with regards to foot chase, vehicle chase?
Either choosing, you know, based on the circumstances, not heightening what's going on based on the, the situation.
So I, I, and let's just set, let's set aside vehicle pursuits then, and we'll talk, because I know that there are some, some agencies have, have tried to figure out how to do, how to do no, no foot, no foot chase policies, or something, something similar. I, my, my sort of initial reaction is that I'm not a fan, but I will be, and that's very, my honest sort of opinion off the cuff here. I suppose one might have some ability to think through it, maybe there are some scenarios where we would want that. But my initial thought, one of the reasons that we have vehicle pursuit policies is that the devastation that can occur with 4,000-pound pieces of steel flying 90 miles an hour down is, is so high. Usually, in most foot chases, when something, most, the officer's the one that was straining their knee, or hurting their back, and those kinds of things. And I understand then that sometimes they do end in a, in a use-of-force encounter. But I, I think if a lot of our folks adhere to some of these tenants that we've discussed here, we can greatly reduce those, the chance of those things happening.
Yeah, because I, I understand that the, the event of the chase affects both the physiology of the person being pursued and the person doing the pursuit, and I'm just curious, you know, do we have a level of what's going on to say that if we chase at this point, we could get into a situation where either the person being pursued, or the officer, could be affected by the adrenaline, by the, by the chase? And that what would have been a, let's say, a moderate or low-level situation, all of a sudden becomes a tragic event?
I, I understand, and, and like I said, I've seen officers lose their career over chasing somebody and tore a knee on a beat-tail theft. So it, it's, it's, your comments are not lost on me.
Sean.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for all this. Good, I have a few questions. I know you said you weren't going to dive too deeply into the disciplinary stuff, but I just have a few questions on that. Because I think it's important to know, like, how violations of this use-of-force policy will be handled. So I looked at the disciplinary policy, and there are non-punitive measures, and there are punitive measures. So first question, if an officer, you know, violates the use-of-force policy, and you said it's a, sort of a progressive disciplinary track, do you start at non-punitive? Do you start at punitive? How do you, you said the, the officers will, you know, at roll call, get this policy and, and, you know, have it in their hands. How do you make sure that they've read it so that when the violation occurs, I mean, an oral reprimand, I feel like if, if someone has a, sort of a, a larger violation of the daily, of the, the police, the policy, use-of-force policy, I think probably shouldn't start at oral, especially if you've been handed this document, told that this is policy and procedure. So where does that, where does the, where does that begin? Like, so for, for first instance?
So, so, let me, let me, let me, let me see if I can help unpack this a little bit. I'll start with the, with the easier part, which was the sort of ensuring the acknowledgement. So we will go, we will do training. Whenever we send out a new policy, each officer has to, they read it, and they acknowledge that they've read it, and if they acknowledge during that acknowledgement, if they have any issues or questions, they don't understand something, it's incumbent on them to find a supervisor and seek clarification. Then they click accept. So that way, we can, so the, the training that we'll, we'll go and do all the, and it never fails, somebody might be it never fails, somebody might be sick that day, we do this, so we'll do the best we can to make sure that we get in front of all of the officers. But then there's also, after that, there will be this, the policy will generate out to all the officers in an email and they'll have to go look and they have to acknowledge it. So we'll be able to acknowledge or we will be able to show that they have, yes, I acknowledge it on this date and this time. With regards to your question on discipline, it would, it, so I guess my, my answer would be it's, this gets back to the objectively reasonable and necessary and proportional. We could go right, based on the severity of an event, we could go right to termination. We don't necessarily have to give somebody, but the idea is that we have to be able to acknowledge the employees, all of those reasonableness factors, all that to determine what indeed was appro, they might say, we might look at the event, go, no, this is, this is a letter of reprimand. We don't necessarily have to start with the oral reprimand. We could do something, hey, your hand rotation was kind of bojanglesy, you didn't do it right. Let's give you some, don't do it that way. Now we're going to do some training on a very, maybe a very minor sort of, of misstep. So I think it sort of depends on what the scenario is, but please don't think that we have to, because we adhere to progressive discipline, that the only thing that we can do is start with a coaching session. Depending on the severity, we could go much higher.
Okay. And so you mentioned the, the written warnings and such. I also noticed that written warnings will be removed, purged if applicable. Would that apply to use of force warnings?
So that's an excellent question and that's one of the policies that we'll have to touch now that the Safety Act is passed. Some of that will have to change to be in compliance with state law. That has not yet been done with, with that policy. Thank you.
If I might, I'd like to add that there's been some changes to the collective bargaining agreement that needs to still be ratified by the FOP and city council and that is also addressed in the upcoming collective bargaining agreement. There's been some changes like the chief said, based on state law.
Grace?
Thank you. I did want to ask a new question, but before I did, I'd also like to go back to my previous question because I don't feel like I got an answer of a circumstance that would be considered inappropriate use of force where say an officer couldn't just say, well, I thought it was reasonable at the time, so it's permissible under this policy. Could you just give us like a hypothetical scenario of something that would be considered inappropriate under this, even if the officer said, I felt it was reasonable at the time?
Sure. So let's say there's a, to tie back into a, a foot pursuit policy, let's say there's an event that happens and there's a domestic disturbance and the woman calls and explains, I was, my, my, I got a black eye and he's, my boyfriend or soon to be ex-boyfriend is running out the door, the police respond, they see him, he starts, he break away and they could, they would be able to tackle him and they were to handcuff him. What they couldn't do while they tackled him is then strike him multiple times in, about the head and neck.
Just above the head and neck.
Well, or, okay. They, they couldn't physically strike him. They could take him into custody and whatnot and as long as he then is tackled and he submits, they wouldn't be able to, well, you made me run after you, so I'm, I'm going to, so there would, that example would show that you could not strike them.
Thank you. And then my new question was in regard to the supervisor use of force investigations, I just wanted to check that those are happening, that's not a new thing, correct? And if there's any details that can be shared with the council or the public, like big picture data, you know, like anonymous numbers or anything that can be shared and wondering if the uses of force are often or ever deemed excessive or not appropriate through that investigative process?
So what, what you see there, that policy or that section, those, that subsection, that's been, that is a carryover policy. It might've been tweaked slightly, maybe there's a few extra variables that have been added, but that has been, that, that was in, in the prior policy. The driving force behind that is that we can make sure we collect all of the information we, we can right away, as soon as, as soon as reasonably practicable, so that witnesses don't leave or, or you know, that we can collect video and other things. So that is, that's the purpose behind it. It is a carryover. I don't have data for you tonight with regards to how many, how many were there. And like I said, I know generally speaking, we have 100 to 150 uses of force. And again, not all of those would necessarily even rise to the level of a supervisory use of force investigation, very minor. So for instance, another example for you, while trying to take someone into custody in a shoplifting event, somebody tries to pull their arm away and the officer does a little hand rotation, stop please, and you just put your hands behind your back. That technically is a use of force, even though it's very, very small and subtle, we would again, consider that a use of force. That wouldn't rise to the level, it doesn't meet, I don't believe the, the variables for when a supervisor would come out and have to do the rotation, but it would still be reported and it would still be in the data set.
And could we have some of that information again, just the big pictures, you know, this year, this was the number of uses of force, the number that were investigated, the number that were deemed appropriate or not? You know, I think that that kind of information would be really helpful for the council and the public. I understand, you know, confidentiality and private information, but I think big picture data like that, that can be held anonymous would be really helpful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mary Alice?
Grace, I just wanted to let you know, I just reviewed it, just pulled up the tactical de-escalation resolution and just so you know, part of this says the Urbana Police Department shall submit annual reports to the city council, which includes the use of force by its officers. At minimum, the report shall include in aggregated form, the number of use of force incidents, the findings of the use of force board, and whether any disciplinary or training actions were taken as a result of the board's review. So that should be provided to city council and for the public once a year.
Jay?
Just have one quick minor question. In section 300, point three, point two, duty to intervene and report, there's a specific individual who's by position, who's supposed to be reported to the service division lieutenant. What if the incident involves that individual? What's the plan for, for making sure there's someone to report to?
Sure. And, and that typically, the scenario would be they would report to the supervisor on, on, on site. So the services division lieutenant, unfortunately for that person is probably most removed from any sort of policing and work in the office environment. So if indeed someone were to say, for some reason that person was the, was the one involved, they should report it to any other lieutenant or, or further command staff, so.
Appreciate that. And then the only other thing was kind of related to that larger conversation about discipline and kind of policies, just I guess it's more of a reminder that that's something I think that we are still looking for of having that conversation and what those policies more broadly look like. I know we're focused on this piece today, but just also wanting to get a better sense of what that tends to look like would still be appreciated.
Chris?
Okay, one, one more question, Chief. In the responsibility of supervisors doing a use of force investigation, on page 13, I don't see any specific reference to body cam footage. I'm assuming that collecting and documenting all physical evidence, a body cam video would be covered in that, but you, you just don't have it like listed as one of the things.
Yeah, so typically, yes, the, the body cam is, is, is on there and has to stay for 90 days at a minimum and then up to two years. And I am not an expert in the flagging of that. One of the things that we tried to do here was when we did this was to make sure that they at least, we kind of gave a, a quick checklist on those things that are most important when it comes to conducting any investigation. So that doesn't matter to me if it's a barking dog case or if it's a murder case. We're going to talk to witnesses, we're going to talk to suspects, we're going to talk to victims, and then we're going to talk to, and we're going to look at, examine any crime scene physical evidence. Those four building blocks are essential to any case and that's essentially what I think we hear one, two, three and four, and then we gave a couple of ideas with regards to the picture, but yeah. So I mean, there might be other evidence that they have to collect, other things beyond even what's listed specifically there.
But you acknowledge that body cam is good, good evidence and good evidence to collect and.
Absolutely.
Oh, okay.
Absolutely. Body cams are actually have been a, a kind of a game changer for some of us in trying to review some of these things. So we've had, we've had squad car cameras for as long as I've been here. And in 1994, that consisted of a VCR in the trunk. So we've had those and we have continued to do, to do, get better and more with the times and in, in 2018, we put together a, the, the package for the body cams and those went out in beginning or January, February of 2019.
Yeah. One other thing, I guess in a long-term observation I have is that I've noticed where there have been use of force problems, and I'm not talking about in Urbana, but other places where I've seen it. One of the common problems is a subject will say something to an officer and an officer will react with use of force to that person's words. And I don't see in our use of force policy, any prohibition against force just to words. I'm not, and, and obviously there's context and scenarios. I understand if I say, I'm going to kill you and I have a knife or a gun or a stick or a broken bottle in my hand, that changes everything. But in, in general, when empty-handed subjects insult an officer, don't like what an officer's doing, call them names, whatever, I, I guess I, I would hope for a prohibition against force in that situation. I know it's tough, but I, I.
Well, my, my response would be then if someone were to simply call them names and, and I can assure you that that happens more than 100 and 150 times a year, that to react with physical force, it was, it would not be objectively reasonable. It would not be necessary, it would not be proportional. So I would argue there is a prohibition against.
Okay, okay. So it's sort of, or it's understood.
It's, yes, it's a simple, yes, it would not correct.
And then one last thing, and I guess I'm speaking for my constituents here, in general, and I know we can't do a hard and fast rule about it, but in general, people do not like when officers, when they have fleeing subj, empty-handed fleeing subjects running away from them, people do not like to see officers using a firearm as a stopping device. And I'm just going to throw that at you just as an opinion and you know.
And I would say that that too is, is not allowable under, under this policy.
Chandra?
I have one, one more question around the use of force review board. Can you describe the makeup of this board? Can you describe how complaints or, or how, how things come before this board and at what level?
So the use of force review board started in, I believe it was 2005. And it was made up of a variety of different police officers here with different levels of expertise in different areas. Some were supervisors, some were defensive tactics instructor, there might include somebody from the firearm staff, who all have different little areas of expertise. And it was initially started so that the department could get better. It wasn't a mandate, it wasn't any sort of, it wasn't, it was meant solely to say, what exactly are we doing and are, can, can we do it better? So I, I salute those from years and years ago who decided to sort of, to start us down this particular path. The makeup is today is, is, is somewhat similar and as a matter of fact, on the press release, one of the things that we want to do is we want to include a citizen on that. And we think that is something that, so what I'd like to do is get the policy, this policy across the finish line and then we want to begin, okay, let's get somebody on, on board. We think that would, would, would be valuable and, and, and so that, right now, the use of force review board is, is advisory in nature to the chief. There are, and I don't know off the top of my head, written four or five police officers.
It's about a half dozen.
They, they meet now, they currently meet on a monthly basis and then they look at different reports and you, you would get, and each person gets assigned a certain number to bring and then they bring to the, to the, to the group to have discussion on issues, problems. One of the things that you, you can learn, you, one of the things that we've learned is, you know, you see some blind spots in your training, hey, we're doing, you know, we could really, we're noticing several officers are having trouble with, with X. What's, what's the best practice now? How can we, how can we solve that problem? And then next time we're on the, we'll, we'll teach this new technique on how to get people into squad cars or something. So there, there are different areas that, that we try to get better at, but that's, I, I hope that, that's sort of how it started, where we are today and I'm hoping that the next step would be to get a, a citizen on that board.
Okay, cool. So as far as the, the force complaints that come before the review, review board, are they complaints or are they sort of the reports that are initiated by supervisors that say, oh, this person used force, let's let the board look at it and see whether or not it, like where the discipline needs to go? Is, is that the kind of review board it is?
So, so let's do a couple of things here. Number one, I want to make it very clear that most of the uses of force are, are acceptable, okay? I, I think that sometimes we say, well, they used force, well, that had to be a, so I just, I don't, I want to kind of help stop, maybe, I don't want the, the narrative to completely turn that every time the officer uses force, it was a bad thing. Sometimes the business that, that we're in requires police officers to use force. Every use of force incident goes before this board. This is, has nothing to do with any kind of citizen complaint. This is a, it, it might be part, it's some, there might be a citizen complaint filed that might have a use of force component, but these, these are all the uses of force. Generally speaking, 2020 notwithstanding, we have somewhere in the neighborhood of nine to 14 citizen complaints a year. And 100 to 150 uses of force a year. So this isn't necessarily a complaint board. This again, was built to review what we're doing, how we're doing it, and is there a way to get better?
James?
Can I clarify a little bit?
Sure.
So that would include displays, technique used to get somebody into a car that was, that involved force. You mentioned getting people in squad cars. That would be anything that is on that list of items that qualifies as use of force. There's not, there's not a low tier that gets ignored by the use of force board.
No.
All of them go through.
Correct.
Thank you.
Grace?
Thank you. Want to make a quick comment on some of the memo, which I know is not, you know, the official document, but I think is still important and something I've been meaning to comment on. I feel like it's very vague in there, you know, certain events that happened, you know, I think we could be a little more straightforward with that, murders of civilian by police that caused concern. And I feel like this very often happens and every time it's said that, you know, this is a national issue, it's not an Urbana issue. And a lot of staff in the city have said this a lot of times and I just wanted to say that I notice and I don't agree and I think that it's minimizing, it's dismissive, it's dangerous. I do give credit that, you know, we haven't had a killing by police in Urbana as far as I know, nor an officer killed on duty as far as I know. So I think that that is, you know, that's a good, a good statistic right there, but it doesn't mean that this is a national issue and not an Urbana issue. Urbana is part of it, you know, it's not just us, but we're not exempt. We have seen these things, I've seen and experienced inequity with police, what I would consider excessive force, apparently it's not under the policy, but it's what, what I would consider unnecessary abusive force and that physically harming someone and then criminalizing them has a huge impact and is very traumatizing. We've also, the entire council received an email from a former UPD officer that was very racist, saying that we just need to target young black men because that's the problem. So I do really resent and don't appreciate when it's framed like that verbally and especially in a memo to us. So I would just like a little more straightforwardness there and not just this idea that keeps getting perpetuated that this is a national issue that has nothing to do with Urbana and we're just being proactive about it. My question then was about if we were having, planning to have a new committee or if this review board was in place of that or is a separate thing, referring to January 2020 when there was talk of the advisory committee on public safety and policing, that it looks like was supposed to include that use of force review, civilian oversight and reallocating resources. And I didn't know if there was any update on that.
So is your, if your question's about the use of force review board, that is, that is a currently standing committee that will. is a currently standing committee that will remain currently standing and that will have, again, the, the next step is to move and, and put a citizen on that particular board. You might be referring to the mayor's discussion, I, I think with regards to the, the first public safety discussion, the item that you just said?
Uh, yeah, I believe so. Yeah, I believe that would be the, maybe the more appropriate direction for the question?
Yes, and as, as you recall, the council allocated about $186,000 in this year's budget to do a more comprehensive public safety evaluation and analysis. So that, that broader outward-looking evaluation will be part of that. But the, the, in the immediate future, we need to name at least one public member to serve on the Use of Force Internal Review Committee. Or I know in other communities, they have a couple of people rotating. But I would appreciate suggestions on how you envision the process for identifying and naming a person to the Internal Use of Force Committee. So that's the first thing we gotta do.
And you feel like that and the study that we allocated will contribute to this committee? Or is that not something that's in progress anymore?
There's two separate things. The Internal Use of Force Review Committee actually looks at individual, specific uses of force engaged in by the Urbana Police Department. But this broader committee is, is separate.
And that, but that committee doesn't exist currently, is that right?
No, no.
Okay. But we would create it. And there have been some in the past too, is that correct?
Pardon?
There have been some in the past, there have been committees like this?
Not that I know of, no.
Isn't there like mayor's neighborhood safety task force?
Uh, Safety Task Force was formed back in, I believe the mid 2000s, and the focus was on things like the aggravated nuisance ordinance and specific, development of some specific ordinances. And they, it, it consisted of a representative from just about every neighborhood organization in the community. And in the, for, for several years, it focused on rental property management and maintenance issues and issues surrounding that.
So is this new committee still have any plans for formation or not currently?
Well, that's to be determined. We, we really haven't done anything on that yet.
Okay, thank you.
That will take council engagement, obviously. James?
Yeah, I, I, I have to say, I'm, I'm happy to hear and appreciative to hear that we're talking about adding a civilian to the Use of Force Review Board. I think that's a, a good step. And do I hear you correctly, Diane, that that would be an appointment that would go through the regular appointment process?
I assume so. To be determined, it's the first-
Because I think, I think that would give it, I think that would give it even more value in, in building trust. I do, I do, I did hear you say something about a couple of civilians that rotate.
I believe, I, you know, I've started to, I've got a look, and I, I always turn to Champaign, because you know, they're our closest example. I believe they have several people who, as I understand it, several people who rotate through to serve on that committee.
Okay, because, yeah, you can't tell the story of Urbana with one person, so it would be nice if there were-
Right. So it could be one person, it could be, I, we just don't know. So I'd appreciate input from the-
And I appreciate that as a suggestion because that, that goes, what we need to do is, is build trust with the community. And opening that door and involving a civilian in that process would, would make it a little more transparent. And I think some people feel it. The feedback I've heard, if people don't feel it's quite, that board has not been as transparent to the public. And, and that's a great step to, to help make that more true.
And obviously, that will involve training for that, those people involved in that committee. Grace?
Thank you. I think this might be my last one. I was wondering, kind of putting this policy in practice as an example, if you felt like this new one had any significant changes that would change how we view incidences, like for example, past ones like in the April 2020 incident, if you felt like anything, if we, if that case were reviewed under this new policy, would anything have been different? Or, you know, kind of what do you see as the major changes? And would that have changed things like in that specific case or otherwise?
Sure. And, and on advice of council, I won't speak about April 2020. I will say that I think absolutely, I think there are certain things that I think you can clearly point to here, like the termination piece on the use of force. I think that's huge to make sure that, that will actually, we'll be able to engage the officer and say, "Just because you start here doesn't mean we finish here." And I think so, that I think is one of the, that I think is, is, is a very important clarifying aspect of, of this particular policy. I also think that the, clearly, the, the emphasis on de-escalation could, I, I don't think could be greater than what we've put in here. I think that will absolutely ring, ring through this policy. It will actually come out when we have our discussions at training and, and things that, although we had done some of these trainings, it was not clear enough in the policy. It is now.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. I will just, just summarize. I wanted to make sure, and I didn't touch on it before, is that the, especially the, the first section on the principles and values, it reflects actions by the city council in years past. So example, for example, the commitment to the 10 shared principles which took place last year, the resolution that prioritized de-escalation, that was another resolution passed by the Urbana City Council. And then earlier councils passed the Human Rights Ordinance. So embedded in this policy and the foundation of this policy are some really important actions taken by the Urbana City Council representing the people of Urbana. So it's now written as part of this policy, which it wasn't in the past. And that's another, another clarification. And finally, I want to thank the members and the officers and staff members of the Urbana Police Department who participated in this process, who contributed to it, and who served this community every single day with professionalism and pride. They respond to 25,000 to 30,000 calls for service every year. And again, force is used in less, well, 99 and a half percent of those incidents are resolved without any use of force. So they are employing de-escalation, they are applying a lot of the principles embedded in this policy, and I wanted to thank them for their efforts. Thank you. We will move on to public input. I will begin this section, I was been asked to read a statement from the ACLU, and I'm going to read that into the record, and then we'll move on to comments from the public. This is to the members of the Urbana City Council. Mayor Marlin, Chief Seraphin, and city staff deserve credit for creating a pathway for members of the Urbana community, including the ACLU of Champaign County, represented by Carol Spindell, to participate in thoughtful discussions about revising the policy. We were pleased to work in partnership with President Minnie Pearson of the NAACP Champaign County Branch, members of the Ministerial Alliance, and other community representatives. ACLU of Champaign County is committed to working for a more equitable and effective approach to public safety in Urbana. This policy is just a first step, a critical first step. Like any policy, it requires meaningful implementation and enforcement so the public can be assured that all officers are held accountable for their actions on the streets of Urbana. We call on Chief Seraphin to continue his leadership to ensure that the policy becomes practice in his department. We call on our elected representatives, the mayor and the city council, to continue their important oversight role. The black and brown communities in Urbana have historically been both overpoliced and underserved. With proper implementation and enforcement, the revised Use of Force policy can be the foundation of a new approach that can help rebuild trust between the police department and the community it serves. And this is signed by Carol Leff, President, and Carol Spindell, Director of Communications for the ACLU of Champaign County.
And, excuse me, Mayor, before we go on to that, I'd like to motion for a five-minute recess.
Okay. Can you make a motion?
Yes, I motioned to recess for five minutes.
Second. I'll put in favor.
Aye.
All right, we'll reconvene at 8:25. Okay, we will reconvene with, continue with public input. First up is Katie Muir. Please state your name for the record, and you have up to five minutes.
Okay. Good evening.
And please speak into the microphone. Thanks.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Katie Muir. As you all know, I am one of the tenants who was recently rapidly unhoused from the rental unit I lived in for four years, located at 206 East California Avenue. During fiscal year 2018, 2019, Courage Connection received funding through the City of Urbana Cunningham Township Consolidated Social Service Program to provide rapid rehousing to families with children requiring a stronger focus on non-domestic violence-specific housing needs. On November 9th, 2020, two current Urbana City Council aldermen, Mary Alice Wu and Sharice Hershey, approved Resolution Number T 2020 11021R in their capacity as Cunningham Township Town Board Trustees, authorizing Cunningham Township Supervisor Danielle Chatawath to sign a subrecipient agreement with the City of Urbana to receive $128,700 and COVID CARES Act Emergency Solutions Grant Funding to provide rapid rehousing to families with children, and subsequently authorized Supervisor Danielle Chatawath to purchase the rental property located at 206 and 208 East California Avenue for purposes of providing emergency shelter for families with children awaiting to be rapidly rehoused. Therefore, at least two current Urbana City Council Aldermen, Mary Alice Wu and Sharice Hershey, are aware of the fact that the acquisition of real property, whether funded privately or publicly, for a project assisted with emergency solution grant funds, is subject to the Uniform Relocation Act and federal government-wide regulations at 49 CFR Part 24 Subpart B. The emergency shelter component of the Emergency Solution Grants Program, Section 576.102, requires that persons displaced by a project assisted with emergency solution grant funds not be treated as program participants by the displa- displacing agency offering rental assistance and/or housing relocation and stabilization services in lieu of providing 42 months of relocation housing payments based on the difference between the rent paid at the unit a person is being displaced from and the rent of the replacement unit as specified in the Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Policies Act of 1970, Federal Code of Regulation, Section 576.408. As you all know, on the same day Cunningham Township purchased the rental property located at 206 and 208 East California Avenue, May 7, 2021, a notice of displacement signed by Cunningham Township Supervisor Danielle Chatawath was posted on the doors of tenants informing tenants they would be provided with $2,000 in relocation assistance if they vacated their rental units no later than August 15, 2021. However, receipt of the $2,000 in relocation assistance was contingent upon a tenant signing a quote "move-out incentive agreement" unquote, that included the following language. By accepting this relocation incentive, tenant agrees that landlord has no further obligations to tenant beyond a return of deposit and will quit all claims against landlord. Previous leases, upon the tenant moving out and returning the keys, the township shall have no liability or responsibility to the tenant under any previous lease. Upon this lease, let me read that to you, upon this lease, not an incentive agreement, upon this lease being signed by both sides. Governing law, this agreement shall be governed by the laws in the State of Illinois and City of Urbana and any other applicable laws. The laws being located at Section 765 ILCS 5 to 170 and Section 765 ILCS 705 to 750-
Ms. Muir, your time is up.
City of Urbana, Chapter 12.5. This is blackmail. I did not sign it, and I did forego the $2,000, but I am not done yet and will not be done for quite some time. Thank you.
Next up is Alan Max Axelrod.
So when someone writes a report, it's very important to make sure that the feedback has multiple sources and also considers the authors or those involved. Last year, Police Chief Seraphin said that he did not believe that de-escalation was appropriate because a gun was believed to be present. And if you listen carefully to the statement made about prioritizing de-escalation where possible, there still is the logical gap that if the police chief does not believe that de-escalation is possible when a gun is believed to be present, then this changes nothing with regards to the ability for a police officer to opt out of de-escalation. And let's reflect for a moment on the times that officers say, "I feared for my safety." Are we changing the language for the same impact? Let's look over some conduct. In the Urbana Police Department, for starters, last year I was called over to a residency on Pennsylvania Avenue. And the police officer who was called over by the landlord, who by the way may be trying to fraudulently get back paid rent for a lease that he'd already terminated, the police officer ended up gaslighting the person he was called to interact with. So when we're talking about the disposition of our police force, I'm sure many of them are much better than that particular officer. But let's not pretend that we are dealing with people that will do well by others when it involves very hard-to-understand trauma that most people aren't even taught. Such incidences also occurred in McLean County, where an activist was beaten up and the proposed witnesses declined to testify for fear of perjuring themselves, which resulted in an activist causing to plead guilty for a crime that he believes he did not commit. Let's also talk for a moment about the two vehicular assaults that happened in Champaign, Urbana, where no charges were filed. Let's also reflect for a moment on the discussion about someone's words, like "I will murder somebody" is a statement that somebody has made two weeks ago in Decatur when trying to hack through the doorknob of someone else's home. He was let go with a notice to appear in large part due to the misinformation circulated by the police, the Fraternal Order of Police in particular, around the elimination of cash bail, therefore eliminating pre-trial detention, which is not true. There were other remarks such as "when to chase." Well, Howard Buffett over in Decatur actually had his own personal foundation, author part of his police report, we have the FOIA's for this, about a chase that he initiated that was not reasonable. We also know that in McComb in 2019- they stripped a black woman in front of other male officers and then tried to gaslight and charge this person with crimes. This is central Illinois. This is our police force. When they make mistakes, when they don't have tight enough policies, when they have people who are unwilling to say definitively when de-escalation can be used. By the way, that same police department said that due to the news coverage, they were threatened and the FOIA for their voicemail showed no threats were issued. On a lighter note, we are now above 300 petition signatures for the Support for Workforce Training Program. Again, we are asking the cities of Urbana and Champaign to engage in an intergovernmental agreement, please include the school boards if you may, to increase the funding available, the stipend funds available to all those enrolled and to increase the enrollment of that program. And I'd like to last use my time to say that apparently Congressman Rodney Davis has been holding a lot of events about vaccinations. Please reach out to him about additional pandemic safety policy as we discussed last week, the Maintaining Access to Essential Services Act. Thank you.
Next up is Tracy Chong.
Hi, I'm Tracy Chong. There has been very little public input during the process of revising the use of force policy. This is in contrast to Mayor Marlin's claims that this process would involve broad public participation. To calm the public's concern regarding the flawed use of force policy last year, Mayor Marlin announced on July 27th, 2020 that an Advisory Committee on Public Safety and Policing will be established. This advisory committee was discussed again on August 3rd where Mayor Marlin announced that the committee will be a mechanism to seek broad community input in different types of venues, including input on the use of force policy. However, after August 3rd last year, we have not heard anything about this advisory committee on policing. Mayor Marlin, you are being dishonest again. Your claim in response to Grace's question is dishonest. You said that the Neighborhood Safety Task Force was about discussing only nuisances and building safety. That is not true. They did spend time discussing crime and policing. Meanwhile, the other committee, Community Alternative Advisory Committee, was formed to represent residents of Urbana in matters pertaining to policing. These two committees that represented residents on policing issues were merged and then dissolved and abolished by Mayor Marlin. The webpage of this committee was removed by the city this past month. Mayor Marlin, your list of lies grows longer and you just were dishonest to another council member. By the way, Chief Sarafin, what a joke that you claim that anyone who had thoughts could listen, that had thoughts during the listening sessions is, it's a joke. The three listening sessions were not well advertised at all. They were very poorly attended and tightly supervised by the city and police personnel. Only 13 members of the public gave input across all three sessions. Even worse still, a member of the public was censored and muted for mentioning Chief Sarafin by name. The youth session was a bust. Not one youth participated, likely due to the harsh warnings and censorship censorship by Lamont Peppers. Chief Sarafin, your claim that everyone's thoughts were listened to shows how out of touch you are, or maybe it's just dishonesty. In addition to the public's input, I'm also wondering if council members were given a chance to give input during the revision process? And what does the council have? What say do they have in the approval of this revised policy? One question I have, do we have a tool or any metric to measure how the new revised policy addresses the concerns that were brought up by the public and city council members? An example of an issue that is not sufficiently addressed is accountability. Chief Sarafin just clarified that it was intentional to not discuss discipline. Fine, but there's a bigger issue of, which is Urbana Police Department's inability to find officer misconduct. Even worse still, in the rare cases where the police department does acknowledge misconduct, for example, the case where an officer was holding a gun and a taser weapon in each hand, Deputy Chief Sols downplayed it and it was not clear at all if there was any consequence to that action. Meanwhile, the definition for imminent in this new policy says that force can be used if an officer reasonably believes that the person has a weapon or is attempting to access one and intends to use it against the officer or another person. This is exactly what happened when Ms. Lewis was attacked by UPD officers. Chief Sarafin, Lieutenant Norton immediately justified the brutality by saying that the officers thought that Lewis was armed. Even Mayor Marlin jumped in to lie to support the police. How about the taser discharge incident where the civilian police review board found improper taser usage? During this meeting, Deputy Chief Sols argued that the officer's use of force was justified because the police officer was, because the police officer thought that the civilian had a gun. This was despite the fact that the man they had tased did not match the description of the suspect, except for race. More alarming still was when Sols responded to CPRB members' concerns that the officers tased someone that did not match the suspect's description and Sols said that maybe the use of policy should be changed to make it okay. Finally, I'll end by asking this question. If we applied this new policy to the officer's actions during the arrest of Ms. Lewis and the taser incident case, what would the outcome have been? Would it still be the same? Thank you.
Next up is Angie W.
Hi, everyone. Last week at the meeting, the township supervisor had mentioned that there may be an additional office at 2006-208 East California. And for the record, my name's Angela Williams. Anyway, I know that also discussions were raised about safety concerns and they were also addressed. I just wanted to mention that equally as important, I feel, are the privacy concerns at 206 especially. So I was in apartment number one and I believe that is the exact same apartment that the township supervisor would like to use as an additional office. But our apartment, and my fiance reminded me of this a couple days ago, he had just said, you know, we could really hear everything from the apartment above. So I was just concerned and wanted to make it aware, you all aware, if there was anything sensitive spoken about that the people above would most certainly hear. So if someone had a complaint to make and they were to come into our old apartment to speak to someone at the new office, it would not be private. It wouldn't at all. So I'm not sure how that situation could be alleviated, but I most certainly just thought it should be noted. Thank you.
Thank you. The last two input cards are from Andrew Foul and Danielle Channawith, applicants for the special use permit. So I think if it's okay, we'll have you speak at the time of the agenda item. It makes more sense than to do it now. Okay, thank you. All right, that finishes up public input and... Oh, later. We have, it won't, it won't take long. We have a consent agenda and then you, then you're up next. We'll first do council input and communication. Mary Alice?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to Katie Muir's comment about the use of funds. If I'm understanding her concern, I wanted to make clear that the funds used to purchase that unit were township funds. They were not any kind of emergency solution funds.
She didn't even hear what I said then.
Well, that's, that's, well, I'm just letting you know that the funds for that were not obligated in any way.
Okay, this is not a time for back and forth. Go ahead, Ms. Wu.
So, so I, so that's fine. As, as the mayor said, this is not a time for a conversation. But I just wanted to let the public know that township funds were used for that building purchase. There were no COVID grants used for that. There were no funds that came through for rapid rehousing that were used for that purpose. That's, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, next. Okay, this is the time for the council to speak, Ms. Muir. Thank you. Ms. Muir, this is time for the council to speak. Thank you. Anyone else? James?
Yes, I want to reiterate something I've said many times, which is I appreciate engaged public with the council. I do want to apologize, last week I received a note from a person in my ward who wanted me to say something at the meeting. Unfortunately, it came a few minutes before the meeting started and I did not check my email and unfortunately, it's not timely at this point because it was for the committee of the whole meeting. I, I do want to be able to share my constituents' input if they, if they have it, particularly at the meeting and out loud. But unfortunately, I'm going to need a little bit more time than five minutes before the meeting via email to be able to do that. So my apologies.
Thanks. Any other comments? I'll just fill some little history on the Neighborhood Safety Task Force to let's set the record straight. This was formed in the early 2000s by Mayor Pressing. I served on the task force as a member with the Southeast Urban Neighborhood Association. When I became a city council member, I continued to serve on the task force. This was an informal task force. It wasn't one of our formal boards and commissions, but it was convened by the mayor to address certain issues. And again, it started when neighbors came together concerned about property maintenance, management issues, and crime in the neighborhoods. There was another neighborhood organization called United Citizens and Neighbors, UCAN, and that was more in North Urbana. And that met separately and I attended several meetings of that. Actually, the first, I attended a meeting shortly after I was elected mayor. When that organization kind of dwindled down to maybe two or three members, we decided it made sense if we're going to meet as a task force to fold UCAN folks to attend the task force. So we have, the task force met off and on, not on a regular basis, kind of as the need arose. It hasn't, we haven't called a meeting in a while. I did have a couple earlier on in my, in my term. But it's, it's, as far as I know, it has not been disbanded. If it's been removed from the website, I'll look into that. But it's, it's been an informal group of neighborhood organizations and the membership has varied over the years. And certainly as we go into looking at public safety and envisioning public safety in Urbana, the folks that were involved in that organization, I would certainly invite to become involved in the broader discussion. Okay, we'll move on, unfinished business. I don't see any reports of standing committees. The committee chair, James Quisenberry.
Thank you, Mayor Marlin. The committee of the whole met last week and approved the following consent agenda with recommendation, recommendation for approval. This includes Resolution Number 2021-08033R, Resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement for project and fiscal management of American Rescue Fund Plan Act with Champaign County Regional Planning Commission. Resolution Number 2021-0834R, A Resolution Approving the Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, Agreement with the Illinois Department of Human Services. Resolution Number 2021-08035R, A Resolution Approving the ESG Subrecipient Agreement with Cunningham Township. Resolution Number 2021-08036R, A Resolution Approving the Emergency Solutions Grant Under the CARES Act, ESG-CV2 Agreement with the Illinois Department of Human Services. And Resolution Number 2021-08037R, Resolution Approving the ESG-CV2 Subrecipient Agreement with Cunningham Township and I so moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by James, seconded by Mary Alice. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
That motion passes.
All right, moving on to the regular agenda portion of this. We have ordinance number 2021-08036, An Ordinance Approving a Special Use Permit, 206 and 208 East California Avenue, Plan Case 2427-SU-2 for Cunningham Township. I believe this was moved forward with recommendation for approval. Am I, am I remembering that correctly or?
Do we need to make a motion?
I'm wondering if we needed a new motion since the ordinance has changed?
No, the title of the ordinance is the same.
Okay.
Is there a second to get this on the table?
I'll second.
Is that Shandra?
Yes.
Okay, before the meeting, we got a new, a new copy of the ordinance.
We have another new one.
Okay, so what we got before the meeting is not in play?
There's one more change.
Yeah, there's actually a change. We just struck condition number three from this one. So the one you have only has four conditions.
Okay, so Kevin Garcia will...
So just to summarize, a supplementary memo went out late last week to address some of the concerns that we discussed at the committee of the whole meeting. The conditions have changed a little bit to address some of those concerns. The first one remains the same as it was in the, at the committee of the whole meeting. The second one has been changed to read, "Prior to the city council issuing new certificates of occupancy, the township program must require residents to live in the building for at least 30 days." That was originally written to say that residents were required to live in the units. Now the township will require that. It also says if a unit is vacant, it shall be eligible for occupancy. So that just clears up any confusion. If a unit were vacant and not occupied, it would be available for occupancy. In the latest version that you've received, the third condition has been struck. There was some discussion about that ahead of time. If you guys have questions about that, please let me know. Condition number three now reads, "The applicant shall register all residential units with the rental registration program with the units in common areas subject, subject to systematic inspection." This is something that we discussed at the committee of the whole meeting and addresses some of those safety concerns. Those units will now be registered through the rental registration program and subject to inspection. And condition four reads, "The applicant shall report length of stay by unit to the township board at its monthly meetings." And this is to hold the township accountable and for the township board to be able to check in and know how long residents are staying in these units for. That's, that is about it. There was some additional language that was struck from the supplementary memo and first version of the ordinance. If you have questions about that, please let me know as well.
So we have Danielle's here and Andrew Foul, the architect. Kevin, did you have anything you wanted to add to Kat's presentation?
I just wanted to state that the reason for a lot of this back and forth is that there were just some, we wanted to make sure that the ordinance had some assurances in it that, that the units would not be used for what building safety calls transient housing, which are stays of 30 days or less. The township had indicated all throughout that they never planned on them being used as that. But a strict reading of the building code could, could create issues. So we were just trying to, to figure out a good way to make the ordinance clear. And we think that with that revised condition two, that the township program must require residents to live in the building for at least 30 days, that, that will address those, those concerns that we had.
Chandra?
So I'm just curious, is it typically customary for like, sort of the additional changes made like sort of at the 11th hour? And you not even tell the applicant until, you know, the applicant didn't know until the memo was out? So is that typical or?
No, and that was, I'll take, yeah, I take full responsibility for, for failing to communicate with the applicant. So I apologize.
Yeah, I wouldn't want, you know, Danielle, she's, she's an elected official, but I wouldn't want a regular, you know, constituent to have to go through all of these hoops that, you know. So thank you for that.
Mary Alice?
So I'm, I'm a little confused here. My understanding of the use of this property is twofold. One is for emergency housing and two, there will be a couple of units that will continue to be rented, not only because there are two leases, but also that there were supposed to be two rentals, two units that were going to be used as rentals. So with that in mind, looking at number two here, if I'm reading the right one, because we have three in front of us right now, does number, does section number two actually apply only to the ones that are leased?
Section number two being residents must stay at least 30 days.
Is that only applied to the, the, the two that are currently and will be proposed to be leased? Because I thought that the purpose was that they wouldn't stay 30 days. So it's possible that they, I mean, there's a range of days that they could potentially stay for emergency housing.
Yes, there is a range that the residents could stay in the building. The, the 30-day qualifier comes from building code from R1 to R2. There are different occupancy limits or residential lengths of stay, limits on residential lengths of stay. That's where the 30-day limit comes from. Kevin, can you clarify how we'll do the other two units?
Well, the other two units are just, they're allowed by right, so they'd be, they would just continue as is. The purpose of the 30 days is, as Kat mentioned, there's a building code, level R1, requires higher standards for, for safety, and that is any stay of 30 days or less. So the intent is that people will stay in these units for, for more than 30 days.
But if they don't, what happens to the special use permit? Are they out of compliance?
No, no, they would not be out of compliance. It's just that the, the townships program would require them to stay for 30 days. But if there's an emergency situation where somebody has to leave after two weeks, we don't want to, we don't want that to, to throw out the special use permit.
So should there be language in number two that, that says, under normal circumstances, that people, residents will live in the building for at least 30 days? I mean, something to qualify that?
Well, I think that's what we're, that's what we're trying to get at is that in.
It says must require residents. So that doesn't say there's, there is any wiggle room whatsoever.
Well, so, and, and maybe Danielle can, can speak more to the program itself. But it's my understanding, and I, I think she included in the memo that she passed out to council, a, I think it's a memorandum of understanding that tenants will need to sign before they, or to get into the program. And on that, it says, "I will stay for at least 30 days."
All right, I just, I think that this kind of bounds township to, if there's issues and the person can't stay for 30 days, then they're out of compliance. I mean, just the way I read this segment here. So, I mean, the township program shall request residents to live in the building for at least 30 days? I mean, that, that would give a little bit of wiggle room there. Because this is a request, right? This memorandum of understanding is a request that these are the rules that they're going to comply with. But if they don't comply with it, then they are no longer eligible.
Right. Yeah, and I, I think the, I, I think that it's, well, it's, it's kind of tricky. We went back and forth most of the day today. And this was, this was the best we could come up with, that their program requires people to stay there for 30 days, but.
Is there anything preventing the city from, from, is there any conflict with the city's rules for us to change this from must to request?
I don't think in, in practice that it would cause an issue. But we want assurances that these buildings are, or that these units are not going to be used often for stays of less than 30 days. Because then building code requirements kick in, and then they would have to make changes to the buildings that I, I don't think they are ready to make, or that they, they could afford to make to bring those into compliance.
Must require should be altered somehow. Okay, I'll, I'll let other people ask questions.
I think City Legal might want to weigh in on that.
I don't usually try and purposely interject other than if there seems to be some conversations that might, and again, whether I help or not, I don't know. What I would suggest is this. I think based on staff's indication of wanting to ensure compliance and not fall into a hole on the building code issue, is to leave it as must. Because then what happens is, if for some reason there's a non-compliance under certain circumstances, it's really up to the city to determine whether or not to act on that non-compliance. And that's going to be conversation with your township officials on what were the circumstances that resulted in the non-compliance. You know, was it a one-time thing? Was it a true emergency? You know, if the person had some family issue maybe that they needed to go to, sorry, I want to have these masks on, talk it. Get out of breath real easy. Or some other nature of a real emergency that resulted in them leaving before the 30 days is up. Or is it just somebody leaving and saying, "Well, I had an emergency," and it's not a true emergency? I think that decision can be done by city staff on the idea of, are they truly non-compliant for us to act on the special use permit? Or are the circumstances such that, okay, we can understand why that happened? And as Mr. Garcia suggested, as long as it's not a continual cycle of they're gone every week, they're in their one week and they're gone, you know, but I think you still meet what you're trying to accomplish, but yet leave the language the same as they must stay for longer than 30 days.
Okay, thank you. My second question has to do with striking the number, the third one in everything but the most recent version. I think that, you know, what we were trying to do is ensure that with the change of the use of this property, that there was adequate safety for these, for these types of units. I, I will say that, you know, as I think about this, I realize that we are all on township board, but the way I'm treating this is as a city council member and any other special use permit that would become, sorry, come before our board. And when we had the retreat come before the board, we actually asked them to put in a fence with the railroad because the railroad was a concern for us, being so close to residential. So I just kind of wanted to say, why is this struck? And to give that, a little bit of that background in terms of how other, other things have been reviewed. So, I don't know who can answer that. Why is this struck?
Well, it was struck because we weren't sure whether the city or the township or anybody should pay for it. So we, we couldn't determine what should go in there, so we wanted to leave it open to council discussion.
Well, this is the requirement of the actual applicant, so the city's not going to pay for it. Because this is a requirement for why we are actually giving the special use permit.
Right, so if the city is paying for it, it should not go in here?
Right, but I, what I'm saying is, I mean, it's something that we discussed. It's certainly up for discussion right now, but it is something that we discussed in terms of the use of the, of the property, for the proposed use of the property and the safety of residents. So I suppose that is a discussion. So those are my two questions. Thank you.
Jay?
I actually wanted to go back to Mary Alice's first question for a moment and to clarify with the way it is worded currently, if I'm understanding this correctly, that just by having that requirement, the township would still be in compliance with the special use permanent, permit, even if they had a resident or, you know, participant who, you know, left within that 30-day period for any reason. I think that's helpful.
Yep, that's correct.
Thank you.
James?
Yeah, I wanted, I wanted to talk to the striking of number three and about the fence. And one of the things in our discussion at the committee of the whole, we talked about what the mitigation factors might be that saying that it's a fence right now might not be the right answer. And so I'm, I'm comfortable with that definitive thing being struck. The other thing that was pointed out to me that, is that that parking lot, I believe, is city property rather than the township property. And so, so the ownership of, you know, who should put, who should own putting it up, if it becomes a fence, that's the right thing to do. I think bears further discussion. I think a commitment still to the, how we address the safety of the location and if there's a play space or what, what is developed is an ongoing thing. I don't know that having it completely defined at this point is something that I'm, I'm going to stick to. But I do intend to watch and from either town board seat or from city council seat, enforce that something gets done by the, by the market opening next spring.
Grace?
Thank you. I just wanted to echo the acknowledgement of the, kind of the scramble and the surprise that it caused adding that last minute. So I appreciate, you know, taking responsibility for that and acknowledging it. And just wanted to echo that, yeah, I think things done as early in advance as possible are great. Because this was definitely a surprise of something like, we didn't discuss this, and so it's kind of led to a scramble. I was wondering too, when we'd hear from the applicant and if they can be involved in their statement and the questions?
Absolutely, as soon as your technical questions are done. So if you're ready. Chandra?
I have one more technical question. This legal description part of it, like have, am I, have I just been oblivious before or has it not always been in, in these things? Why is it here at this time?
It's included in special use permit cases, not necessarily every variance. Or every ordinance, I'm sorry. But special use permits it is.
Thank you.
Okay. Danielle, Andrew, would you like to speak? It's up to you.
Good evening. I hope everyone's staying safe. First, I just wanted to announce, have a happy announcement and a thank you. We had our first baby born in the, our emergency housing program four days ago. The mom, her and her two small children and herself pregnant at eight and three-quarters months, was sleeping in her car when she came to us and she went into the program two days before she gave birth and she's back into housing. Secondly, I want to thank the 35-plus volunteers we had this weekend who helped us furnish all the apartments, clean them top to bottom, and get them ready for move-in this week. So I just want to publicly thank, just, it was unbelievable. It was very hot this weekend and we were just scrubbing away. And it was about 20 hours of work between Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. We do, with approval this evening, with the hope for approval this evening, we plan on moving in on Thursday. This is because we have been told, as we have predicted, that all hotels, at least within this area, are full this weekend because of you of I move it. So we're kind of between a rock and a hard place and I really, I, you know, I want to thank city staff because we went back and forth many, many times today. The mayor and I were on the phone multiple times. It was definitely a scramble that was not appreciated. But the, but the response, once I brought to your attention the concerns we had, it was pretty amazing. And I want to thank the city's staff for that. So, I just, we have three proposed changes. I'm, my understanding, to put it in the public record, is that if you go forward with the special use permit as it is rewritten before you, with number one, the township program must require residents to live in the building for at least 30 days, that essentially that is evidenced by our program rules, which I have included a copy. It's the very last. It's got the heart on it with the color. It says, "I agree to engage with the program for a minimum of 30 days and understand that if I elect to leave, I will not be allowed to return for 30 days." Essentially, a transient housing situation is one where, similar to CU at home, where people come and go and come and go. That's not our program. It's not the intention of our program. It's not a place where you can, essentially, it's for literally homeless families who don't have another place to go. And so the coming and going is not, not part, it's disruptive to the program. We, I did make clear to the city staff that the following situations occur and that it is in the best interest of public safety that we allow unplanned transitions to occur. That would be things like someone moves out and we can't control their body and what they choose to do. In fact, it might actually be the best thing. They might have found an auntie or grandma who said, "Hey, you can move in with me." And that might be the safest option for them. They sometimes, they, we do not have people who are fleeing domestic violence in our program. We do not have the safety protocols in place for that. And people are screened for that when they come in. But sometimes domestic violence is an evolving issue. And so we find out after they've moved in that there is a risk there, in which case it is imperative that we be able to move people out of our program into Courage Connections program. We do have folks at times who need to go to a 30-day detox program. We think it is amazing when they agree to do that and we work closely with them. We've gotten a number of individuals in detox this summer. It's been very successful. And we would like to be able to exit folks if that is the most appropriate. And they would, it's usually a 30-day program and then they would be welcome back in. There are times when people are a danger to themselves or others, whether they're in our program or not. It happens, right? So there's a lot of mental health issues in our community. And in those cases, we would need the flexibility to exit someone. And we had three participants die this last year, so simply we cannot control whether they stay for 30 days. So it's in the best interest, and those were not participants in our emergency program, by the way, but one was at CU at home when he passed away. All three of them actually were homeless individuals who I believe may have at least had an extended life were they to have better housing situation. So it's in the best interest of public safety that unplanned access be allowed to happen. And it's also in the interest of public safety that if we have an empty unit and if we have a homeless mom, we really wanted to be explicit that we can match the unit with a homeless mom and not have to wait 30 days, which was our original interpretation of this. But upon looking at the building codes, which I finally dug into when I received the staff memo, or I was notified by Ms. Wilkin, so thank you Grace for that. I had not seen the memo, so I went and looked at it and realized, oh my goodness, it's got a total time bomb and we're going to have to deal with this. I started looking at building code because, you know, hey, that's what we do at midnight. And so I realized that building code actually talks about primarily transient use. Means it's a transient use, that it's not that one individual leaving early all of a sudden makes it a transient use. That would mean a landlord who like rented to someone and then they, you know, had an emergency and. That would mean a landlord who, like, rented to someone, and then they, you know, had an emergency and had to go home and not stay at the U of I, that they're all of a sudden transient. Is that what I'm saying? There's, there's all kinds of circumstances that come up. So it's pretty clear in the code that primarily transient use, the intention of the use is what is important. And our intention is very clear, 30 days minimum. And in fact, our participants cannot seek housing with a voucher before they've been in the program for 14 days. We have not seen participants who exit before 30 days who are going through the program. But that, that said, I've got three single individuals who were kicked out of CU at Home when they closed, who have been at our hotel program, all of whom have vouchers, all of whom are doing great, and who are about to exit into housing, but they may actually need three or four days at this location. That is unusual, because they've actually been in our program for over 60 days, and they're just about to exit. So those are the kinds of, you know, reasonable accommodations we would want in this going forward. So the second is, I just wanted to make sure that the, I think the reporting requirement is fine. We actually have detailed reports on all of our participants. And I'm happy to make that available to the town board monthly, which would also make it fully public, so it's very frequent. Building inspection can look at it, community development can look at it, the public can look at it. We can show that obviously without names, but by unit. And then the last I would say is just, I guess I would say, and I've said this before, I welcome partnership with the city. I welcome financial partnership with the city on addressing something that all of our constituents face, which is housing insecurity. It is not just a township issue to deal with housing, you know. And I do know that the city does a lot with home and C W G funds and funding for organizations. But I think that when I heard, you know, when I was asked, you know, do you, could we put a barrier up to make sure that people don't go in the parking lot? Well, of course, I am supportive of children's safety. There isn't a barrier there now. There have been children in the space. I assume it's open to public. But, but it is a city parking lot, and it is the city's farmer's market that, that was cited as the issue. And so what I would encourage, whether it's in this or a future conversation, is that essentially, we have been told we don't have access to COVID dollars this year. Township's not going to have that. We're talking about emergency housing that is a major public safety priority to addressing COVID in our community. And I would encourage the city council operating as the city to think about, could we partner together in essentially providing a safe and welcoming space for the children at this location? So I would welcome that. However you deem that, whether you want to put it here or a future conversation, I think we should come back and discuss that. And with that, I'll just say, you know, those, those were the reasons that we had made the changes. I generally think with the exception of the city paying for the fence, we're on the same page with the city staff. And I'm happy to answer any questions, or I also feel like Andrew has some important items to share, so maybe he could share it then. If you had questions for either of us, we could do it that way.
Come on up, Andrew. This is Andrew Fell, architect.
Andrew Fell, I've been retained by the township to provide architectural services for the project.
Make sure you speak into the microphone.
Oh, is that close enough?
Yes, that's better.
Full disclosure, I'm also on the plan commission. I was not contacted by the township until four days maybe after the plan commission case. Primarily, I just want to speak to kind of the, the building code aspect of this. And, and I think some of the confusion kind of in, in the way the wording was presented is, is it, the, the, the case was kind of related to building code categories. And the, and there is a, the transient housing category in the building code actually says it's primarily transient. And the other one, and R2 use is primarily, I don't remember the word, is stable, basically. And in the building code, the, the transient housing is really meant for places where people are totally unfamiliar with their surroundings. So that's a hotel, for instance, is transient housing. Sorority is an R2 use, is not transient. So those are the people that are familiar with, with what their housing is. So it's a very rare case in the building code where, where there's leeway in something. Almost everything in the building code is an absolute. Well, this is one of the places where, where they give some leeway, because the building code does understand that not, that people are people. And sometimes if you put an absolute of, if someone doesn't stay 30 days, it's transient. That's a, that's a very different category of hazard in the building code with, with a greater index of, of features that you have to introduce into the building. So that's basically, if you have any other kind of technical questions, I'll try to do my best to answer them.
Any questions? Grace?
Thank you. I just had one, which, not a major issue. I feel comfortable moving forward with it as is. If, you know, the township and the city end is in agreeance on that. I was just wondering if there was a little more background, any light you could shed, particularly from the city aspect of paying for the fence? Because it seems like it was, it was talked about. It was kind of an earlier draft, like, was that agreed and then not? Or that's something that was never really in the works as far as the city side?
I think Carol will address that.
It hasn't been discussed on the city side, so it's not a budgeted item. We don't know how much it would cost. And so at, at present, we're not prepared to, to volunteer to pay for it, but we're happy to have a discussion about it.
And conditions in, in this ordinance are binding only on the township. So there, you don't put conditions binding on the city in this particular ordinance.
Right.
I'll just mention that you also serve as the town board, and this fence was not budgeted in this year. It's not to say we can't reallocate things. I mean, budgets are projections. But that was one of the concerns that I had going forward is, it wasn't budgeted to do this. And it was the first time it came up, it was last week. But, you know, like I said, there are funds that are coming down that were not anticipated. And, you know, we could also pull from funds that we had set aside to see what we could do.
Mary Alice?
I just wanted to make a proposal for a slight change. I don't know if this would address some of the concerns. So in the original, number three, it says, "The applicant shall install adequate safety barriers or mechanisms between the courtyard and parking lot, as approved by building safety." So my proposal is to strike "shall install adequate" and just say, "Review the need of safety barriers." I think, I mean, it's possible that they aren't needed, and it is possible that they are needed. But it doesn't say anything about, all it is is a review of what the needs are. So that's, that's what I'd like to say.
Is that a friendly amendment?
That is a friendly, well, okay. Before we get this on the, the problem that I have is we have three different versions of this ordinance.
Okay, let me, I will try, I will read what I believe to be the final conditions that you will be voting on, and then you can work from there.
Okay, that sounds good.
So the main changes, the only changes in this ordinance are in section one, which are the conditions. Number one, prior to the city issuing new certificates of occupancy to allow uses classified by the building code as R1 or B, the applicant must first have a licensed architect, conduct a code analysis, and make any necessary building modifications to bring the units up to code. That hasn't changed. Number two, here's where some changes occurred. Prior to the city issuing new certificates of occupancy, the township program must require residents to live in the building for at least 30 days. If a unit is vacant, it shall be eligible for occupancy. Number three was stricken. Number four, the applicant shall register all residential units with the rental registration program, with the units in common areas subject to systematic inspection. And then number four, the applicant shall report the length of stay by unit to the township board at its monthly meetings. So that's what is in this version that you have in front of you. If you want to add back in the language related to the barrier, then that would be an amendment.
All right, so that's my friendly amendment that we add in number three. We strike "shall install adequate" and ask for "review the need for safety barriers."
So that sentence will read, "The applicant shall review the need for safety barriers or mechanisms between the courtyard and parking lot as approved by building sa-" Well, I guess we didn't need "as approved by building safety."
Yeah, because it's not installed.
Do you want an end date, a date on that?
You know what? I'm going to change it to May to June, because if we're going to review it, traffic is going to change at the beginning of that.
So June?
June 1st to 2022. And then if something has to be installed and we have to include it in any budget, it would be in the next fiscal year.
Okay, so that sentence would read, "The applicant shall review the need for barriers or mechanisms between the courtyard and parking lot by June 1st, 2022."
Yes, that's fine.
Is that acceptable to the township?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
We're actually conducting a safety review of the property on all sites, and so it would be in line with our current work.
Okay, so we have an amendment, a friendly amendment. Is there a motion?
I guess I need a second, don't I?
You need a second.
So unless, friendly amendments don't need a second. If the people who originally proposed it.
Since the motion came from the Committee of the Whole, and I made it on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I think I can say that I'm okay with it. I don't recall who seconded it.
Chandra seconded your motion.
I think we could allow the adjustment of the language.
Okay. Chandra, you are, but that's. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Mr. Coisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you all for helping us achieve a resolution to this issue.
All right, next would be ordinance number 2021-808-037. An ordinance revising the fiscal year 2022 annual budget. This was, I think this was moved with a recommendation to pass from Committee of the Whole, so I'm, so move?
Is there a second? A second. Grace? Grace, any, any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Coisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
And I believe I vote on that too, right?
That one's not the budget.
It's a budget amendment.
Oh, okay. Mayor?
I vote for that too. That motion passes.
And that's all the business from the Committee of the Whole.
Thank you very much, Chair. Reports of special committees, there is none. Reports of officers. I do have one, the question arose last week about neighborhood cleanups. Should have gotten an email, but just for the public's information. There's going to be a neighborhood cleanup in targeted areas of the city. These are low-income census tracts. This is a cleanup that's done on an annual basis, funded with community development block grant, grant funds. That's why it's in targeted areas. So a postcard has been made to about 2,800 people. It's September 25th, I believe. The folks have already been notified, and the postcard constitutes their, their ticket to participate. But anyway, this is an opportunity to dispose of, you know, fairly large items that typically are hard to dispose of. And then there's special pickup for seniors and persons with disabilities. So typically, it's done every year. Last year, we didn't have one due to COVID, but this year it's resuming, and we expect it to be. It's always been a very popular event. Yeah?
Should, if people don't receive it and they think they're eligible, should they call community development to figure out eligibility?
They could, but they typically, they're.
Well, postcards sometimes get stuck in, in junk mail and so forth.
It'd be the grants management office.
It'd be the grants manager, okay. Thank you.
And last item is, I wanted to report that we have had three new victims of COVID in the county today. That brings our total number of people who have passed away due to COVID, Champaign County residents, to 172. It was a person in their 90s, a person in their 60s, and a teenager. So, you know, we, we have said it so many times, you know, I've lost count. But I beg people to please get vaccinated. It's the only way we're going to get through this pandemic. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.